We can work, but I don't have a committee to look at it once if you adopt them. And you can do it with a committee, there's only a candidate. You can make it five in there. It doesn't matter to me, it's something you get to decide. Nobody dictates this to you, you do it yourself. And there's no question you can do it. If that's what you elect, you just gotta be committed to do it. If you do it, whatever the majority says, that should be your rule. And I, I don't care to come and help you, anything you need out of me, I'll do. I can't be in two places at once, just give me another lead down to jockey my schedule. But I'll help you any way I can. But I'll never tell you what's there. That's your choice. You're, that's where you're getting the big bucks. The voters put you in here because they trust you and expect you. And, and when they get to where they don't, they won't elect you again. As long as you're being elected, you should have an equal voice as everyone else on this body. It's a decision y'all have to make for yourself, not something I can make for you. Not something that I can, he may wish something, but ultimately, it's your choice as a legislating body.
Do you all, this body, do you feel this is something that we need? Or we benefit from, or do you like the way we're functioning now?
Well, I would just say that I think we do need to have some basic rules. Just because this to protect ourselves. And again, I don't know what that means, I'm gonna have to look at it more, but realistically. I mean, we do kinda have some, like I said, we have some precedent. We've done some things certainly, and we've had some, I've been a commissioner before. I'm an expert at it, I've got other commissioners just been, and the, you know, other members just, on that other school board and stuff like that. So they, we've not, I guess you'd say total, we're not, we're not doing it whole. It's just it would be better to tweak it a little bit better, that way we can, and I, again, some of that comes on me, and I can work some of that proposal and get it out to us, and then come back and have a meeting and set up that workshop or something like that to go through some ideas.
Things that you've done historically, if you set precedent on, and that's the way you wanna function in the future. Just in corporate acting, you're right. You just have it written down, we're twenty years from now, unless they permit, that's still the way they're gonna do it. You're not, just you're not doing it one way one month, another way the next month, or one year versus another year. You just got continuity.
We have about six new, and then kind of in the model, so maybe that's some of the two, it's kinda walking through.
Pinterest County, last, not the last election, like, four years ago. All of them, one commissioner got re-qualified. One didn't come, retired. Some of them quit, some of them, if you like. All of that institutional knowledge was gone. Boom, one failed school, it was gone.
I'm glad you brought that on up. To your knowledge, is there a way that a county can set up staggered, or only half their...
There's only one way, I know, you gotta determine, uh, there's only one way.
What I could say, the question would be, have you heard?
Oh yeah, there's a way. You'd have to go to a charter form government. Now, I'm not talking about a consolidated government. We've got three consolidated goings in Tennessee. Davidson County, Trafalgar County, and Hall County. We got two charter forms to go. Shelby County and Knox County. And Knox County's got term limits. You can have staggered terms, whatever what your charter says, that's the way you function. But on the general law, the answer to your question is no. And I think there should be, yes. Yeah, I think there should be staggered terms, because that way you can't possibly have a ditch. You might lose most of your institutionalities in a two-year cycle, or in a four-year cycle. If you want to do it one time. And it's actually, yeah, that.
That's why the state school board does that.
Yeah, school board, the law has put that in the school board. And I don't think it would take a great push from the county commissioner association to get that changed. And it might get into the constitution. But, but for a fact, state law allows you to have a charter form government. I don't advocate that you do that. I'm just asking you a question. Because it would be hard, here's the problem, the average citizen, and I'm talking about me included. I didn't understand how, I, all I learned in cities class is all I had in school. The average citizen doesn't understand how our vote functions today. To tell them another way is better, is impossible. Because if you don't know one, how can you compare the two together? So it, I think it'd be very hard to do. But it can be done, but I don't think it'd be a bad thing to have your, like, just like you're a senator, you're a representative, to look if there's a possibility for the statute to be changed to do that. You can ask for a private act, but I, I think the constitution may dictate it. Anything else? Keep in your prayers, if you would, Dan Ray Collins, county commissioner from Giles County. They're gonna bury him tomorrow. We got two counties in Tennessee that have zero on debt. Giles County was the first one to hit that, and others make them count. But he was a blessing to me, he was a, well, forty years in top student. And we're fixing to go through bill review in the next few weeks. And I was thinking how important he is to keep me on track on education issues. But he's gone. I'm going to visit station after I leave here. Keep in call, hang with your prayers.
Amen.
Thank y'all, y'all have a wonderful place, and God bless these boys.
Take care of them.
How long will you be leaving?
I have a couple more items, I have another business, I have Mr. Solomon, I wanted to address y'all, and I have a, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. I apologize for being so late in presenting this. I asked for it to be presented at this meeting, because I'd like to do a press release, on some things that emergency management has been doing to attempt to bring additional revenue to county, and keep pushing forward. But here's some brief information on a grant that I applied for March of last year. I didn't previously agree for commission, but that, I never expected to get. But this grant has been awarded, it's an EMTD grant for emergency management performance. First sheet is the breakdown given by TMA. TMA's been a great asset helping EMA to achieve this. First question the grant asked me was, is it a magic grant? Yes it is, it's fifty-fifty. But it's not gonna cost any county any money, because I used last year's existing budget to fund this grant, so it's already funded. Plus we're gonna get an additional five thousand, starting March of this year. Takes a year to get that grant funded. A lot of TMA salaries to pay for, by this grant. Director salaries, I don't have an intent of creating a salary at this time, because other equipment projects need to be completed first. But this is just a brief breakdown of responsibilities that I will have to do in order to get this grant. It's an annual grant. Like I said, it's bringing an extra five thousand dollars on my budget every year. And it can be built upon, two of eight is twenty percent, as time goes on, so. Included in that tag is quarterly reporting what I have to do to the state. That's something a lot of people in this county have been wanting, was more accountability from emergency management. This grant helps to establish that, I quarterly report the projects that have to be completed and submitted to the state, so. I was wanting to make the commission aware of this before I did a press release on our local media. Our provisions should be made aware of that first, so, must be nice. Any questions?
Are we being asked to do anything? Or just say, it's already done, congratulations?
It's already, okay.
Congratulations.
But this is reoccurring funding every year, as long as I meet the criteria of this grant. We get it every year and I can build it.
All week.
This is addition to the equipment grants we get every year, because they're unpredictable. This is purpose of the grant, to make emergency management more professional and accountable.
Congratulations.
And we get free money, yeah.
So what can you buy with this money?
Anything under emergency management. The way it's laid out on the first sheet, if you put towards a salary, at some point later down the road, I'd like to see that be implemented, but this year, next year, if you got any other things up there, you can.
Please, sir.
Yes, sir. But if there's other equipment projects you can complete first, in my opinion. Any other discussions, sir?
Thank you, Roy.
Appreciate it. The last item I have is that the budget committee reviewed a training amendment document. I believe it was pushed through this commission concerning, I believe it was four hundred dollars, or to pay for the probation, so I think we had a discussion concerning that, that amendment to the document.
No she agreed.
Any other, I'm not putting up any more in discussions, please.
Well, you, you approved her a thousand dollars last year for, in the flash, she was going to, and she didn't read, she got four hundred dollars given at that decision, that's what, that's what it is.
You're saying that, but also, for poor anything, it's, for us, instead of doing it, then, you know. Because that must have been a bad precedent. You don't write a check, and then come down, so I wrote it in check, go ahead and pass it. That's why I...
Yeah, I agree, I think she, she actually wrote checks in the books, before she actually got the approval.
Maybe, maybe she thought that she got the approval for the thousand, she still had the four. I don't know, and I'm not excusing it, I'm just saying it might have been her.
That's fair, and the whole policy will really come through, and be, and help our employees know where the list is expected, and their states, not a good committee.
Because, well, as far as communication, I've seen a password check written, and it didn't be already used in the dollar, and then come for us and say, well, I need your approval.
If y'all have the history, y'all, y'all know kinda how it evolved. One time this was a private, a private company, private loan. They walked away from the contract. The previous commission discussed this issue, brought, now there is, there is some revenue issue to get this off, we need to look at it hard, from the budget committee, and I've already discussed that with Jessica, trying to make sure that it does stay what I consider even in the balance, or money coming in from fees and core and things of that nature. So that's the, that's the only concern I have with this, although I do agree that the, the training, these, you know, covering stuff, but we, we're gonna have to, this is something we're gonna have to look at pretty hard in the future, and make sure we are, you know, on that, yes.
I don't have any follow-up with training, because I have, but training is always good, but where I had the problem was that, I looked, I said, well, where's the line at? Where's the money in the line at? Zero to zero. How do you take four hundred dollars from zero? That's what I wanted to know. And then we found out that we were gonna take it from some other, like, designated, and I thought, well, I thought everything was designated. And then I thought, well, we're on borrowed money, how is that gonna work? So this is my comment.
We are on borrowed money, yeah, we are. We have, now, as far as borrowed money goes, the education debt service account, we're about four hundred thousand dollars shy, but then back even the current education debt service where we'd be operating. The reason why I've been pushing that so hard, and looking at every kind of cost saving, is that I wanted this to be early in the year, payback transit, and looking at all of it. I agree, we, we do got some budget housekeeping, and nineteen eighty-one act, yeah, we have the financial management committee, we're living in, Monday night, I brought in a guy from local government corp, a corporation that talked to us, but again, it's a lady, you said it the best you could say it, we're spending money.
You can also purchase orders, there's a, we need purchase orders on things.
Just so.
I'll just make these comments, and we know four hundred dollars doesn't make a very discounted, but the manner in which we continue to operate issues, from foremost, you spend money you do not have. I just, I'd like, and, we don't have four hundred dollars, it is not there. Number two is that office has been removed, the revenue is running significantly behind pace, and that being a service revenue neutral. So that one is coming to the forefront pretty quick. Gotta have a way to operate on, because the revenue's not being produced to jet to, to support it. Don't have the entry on that last year, you know, what's gonna happen this year? The revenue's falling off significantly. All I would say is, if you can't keep doing things in a naturally responsible way, as given money you don't have, and some have to even have later on, we're gonna be able to get money. Just yet, but this one fits exactly the manner which this county's been operating on. And it, it just don't fit going forward. I mean, we continue to, they do it, but financially, you're not changing a thing, it's been more than you can handle. We don't have a loss, we're in this office in trouble.
I agree, I agree, but why we approach, why we approach issues, it doesn't change.
I'm not sure I understand.
I mean, that's just like you say, the way we, just like we approach money issues, it doesn't change. Because we, we send out money, but we don't take in no money. That means ain't no way that it doesn't make it operate.
And the only, the only thing that I would add to that is that, I, I mean, we've been fortunate to have a very, but also, I am looking at every expense, and looking, because that's the only really from an operational standpoint, as your manager, and, and there's a lot of things that come through our desk, and our, you know, option, our office, and look at it as closely as possible. And, I don't, I don't like doing this, it was discussed in the budget committee, and I'm glad we've got that second set of eyes. But like Ronnie said, I've got some real concerns concerning the future happen of this probation office, and we might be really looking at that hard. You know, the office, I don't know whether it's because people aren't paying the fees, or whether it's something to the circuit court, whether that money is not coming back to us. But again, systems, and looking at the systems, and, and looking at it, you know, again, it's like the tire, we should go somewhere, and then I can't never find it back. Yes, go ahead, just.
I also talked to the circuit court part, and I'm not for sure that, you know, what we did is budget committee, we took a lot of line up positions, is everything being elected, because, you know, they may be short, handy, I'm not for sure. I doubt it, I, that's a question that we need to, I'm not for sure.
Well, they got, they got a four hundred and thirty thousand dollar shortage.
Let's, let's stay on task here, this budget amendment, I want to address this issue. Do you have, before you have a motion for a pass?
I, I, I'll make a motion.
Okay, go ahead, a second.
I'll say.
Call the roll.
Nate Boyd? No. Russell Wright?
Yes.
Corey Dunford?
Yes.
Karen Asher?
Yes.
No Bush?
No.
Greg Mitchell?
No.
Ray Raymond?
Yes.
Ray DeGeehan?
This is like anything, yes, it just moved from one line out to another, where you got four over here, and then you take them and put it over here. Yes.
Tim Dunford?
I don't like any of this like that.
I didn't see any money in the line I was moving to, no.
Ronnie, what happened?
No.
It's fine.
Okay, no. Any other business? Yes, go ahead, man.
Solid waste, the charter policy, what is that, this other thing? Because I'm getting employed, people ask me, they can break trailers, I don't buy that.
At this point right now, the policy is no. We can't, we don't have the ability to handle trailers up above size, and we don't have to cost, the problem has to do with safety, attractiveness, of how we reorganize. It's got really, it's just, it's problematic, in the standpoint, you can't turn around, backup. You see what, you see what we've changed, and that's really what, what's what drove the trailer policy issue.
You say a certain size, or you say a million dollars? Like a, like a lawnmower trailer is that acceptable, but a fifty-foot trailer?
See, it gets into, that's the problem I have, or, you know, how well the driver is, how well they can back, and then why don't they bring in trailer full of trash? So that's why I'm just...
You don't want to take a load on back the trailer, so they're gonna pick what you're buying out of them. I just didn't know that.
Well, you know, and I'm the, and I'm the, now, just since you brought up solid waste, we do have the ability to hire, I believe, solid waste, you know, unless you've been up there ever, you can see how, the choice of view has a huge situation, when they bring in horse trailers that are completely full, or they bring in a twenty or a twenty-six foot trailer, and some of them's got needles in it.
Yeah, I'm not.
I'm just saying, you just want to clarify for a second.
I just need to know what's going on.
Right now, until we figure out, so we've got, what's happened is, we've got the, the, solid waste, again, I kind of, we're in the solid waste department, we're discussing it in committee. We found a better way to get rid of trash in a more efficient way.
Cheap.
Cheaper, and, and run it out of county county again, and every time I look at it, I find a better way. That has caused us to change our traffic pattern, which has forced us not to allow trailers up there, because we can get jack nine, and back to, and they can't, they go up the hill, and you got, you got the ready.
The drivers will make a difference.
And, you know, and then you've got these other, got a lot of them.
And I hate to say, is there some that shouldn't need to be driving, you hear it? But when you get them up there too, and install this, it, it gets kinda hairy sometimes.
So we got a low product cost?
Correct, yes. It may change, it may change, but I'm just saying, today, until we figure out, we got another contract, we got two more, we got another open top container coming on, on the ground, which is there now. It's there now, and then we got another one coming in the line. So that, what if that's done, in the interim, that has constricted our space, so we can't drive, try to barely drive vehicles up there, and we gotta make sure this, and then once we get our, hopefully, our, our new facility built down there, it'll, it'll solve all that problem, and we can go back.
I got one more thing, and I got, fire department, I got a call saying that we're going to disman the fire department, and we're going to, I have not heard anything about that. I know there's a question about this, whether or not they're incorporated or not. I think that's as simple as them sending me a twenty dollars, unincorporated, and that issue solved.
I think you're, you're working that issue for us, and we'll get back to you on that. We're, fire department is a, is a problem that occurred over the years, and it's something we're gonna have to sort out, but it's not, we're not gonna sort it out today.
Okay, so you'll be back?
Yes, sir.
Thanks, sir.
Yes, great.
Is it be possible for all of us to get the information from the chief executive officer, Officer St. Thomas, if there's a chance, in that meeting?
Sure, I mean, the, the, I was called on Thursday to meet with, it was actually Tuesday, Ronnie, him, y'all were there too, I was with it, but again, I mean, to me, yeah. The bottom line was discussing billing, and how to, how to work billing, and how to do it better, and...
How to bill more than?
Medical bill.
Or the hospital?
How, how do they work their bill? Yes, they work R1s.
That is?
Yeah.
No notes, no meetings, no meeting?
There was no meeting. It was just, it was just an information gathering thing, that I was invited to, to attend, and I left halfway through the meeting, I had another meeting. No decisions. All it is, trying to get smart on the, how do we do better with healthcare, Medicare, Medicaid? We, there's a real problem in Tennessee.
So did we talk about settling the handling of service?
Never heard that discussion, either Robert.
And if you're talking about the hospital, by the way, the hospital, they're having to influx running from St. Thomas, it's a sale, and just to keep the doors open over there. So you don't have to worry about the hospital.
I hope, I hope what is the hospital, I met at the chamber conference meeting that night, he was there, went there, he said that he is, I really didn't know that, he said that he was wanting to try to run the hospital as best as possible. I think he's here, he may be new to that, I agree, in case you guys, yes, you know him? Hey, what, would you, no, you, I think.
Chairman, this is Brian Gill, I served on the hospital board of the local. Herb Austin is the chairman, we have a board that kind of, a patient cares what that board does. I'm doing every board, every director of schools is on that, you know, board, it's traditional. And Brian Gill is his name, a great young man, you know, he's, he's here for the law hall. You know, they move those people around all the time, and, but Brian Gill is his name.
Again, it was, I got a phone call, so I had to come up here, and, and some meeting, and then I left. I had another meeting, I had a national management meeting, so.
Well, I don't mind talking about the elephant in the room, but, I mean, it's, it is an issue, I think, and it's becoming more of an issue, that we're having meetings, or whatever you wanna call them, whether meetings or not, with two or three commissioners, and everybody else is on the block. And I think it's creating animosity, it's creating mistrust, it's creating party, because there are no, you know, there's, we screen transparency, but none of us knew about that. And whether it's an impromptu meeting or not, it's still a meeting. I mean, the two commissioners get together.
My question is, if I go and gather information?
You buy your own stuff.
Okay, so, just me by myself is all right.
Correct.
If I, if you happen to be there, it's not.
If we don't gather, no.
If you're just gonna gather information, I'm just questioning.
I don't think the sunshine law specifies, the sunshine law is more about, that's what I'm concerned about, is that if you have a preconceived notion of voting, and what you're gonna do, and all that, or whatever. Again, I'm asked to attend a lot of things, and a lot of people want me to be, I try to work with all of you. If you pass me to attend, I will come, I will listen to the brief, whatever. There's no discussion on what can be done or can't be done. I will tell you, though, I am extremely concerned about our hospital, and been concerned about it, and I'm also extremely, extremely concerned about how much is, how much we're not improving, and how much medical costs cost a citizen. We have right now, I have bills, citizens have not paid, they have not paid, that, that we're paying as taxpayers. Some of them are gone, some are deceased, whatever, and so we, we got a real revenue string of problems.
Do they go to collections?
That's, that's why, that's why I have the county attorney, we have a, we have a contractor, that's, yes, great.
Mr. Chairman, I don't, I, I don't kinda understand the sunshine law about if you're gonna vote or not. I, I thought sunshine law was if you, or if you...
I'll give you a please, please answer that. The sunshine law is simply to, where, if you're discussing something up for a vote, or discussing county, county action that is going to require your vote, you've got to have that in, you've got to have that meeting, or you can have your emails, where everybody can see them. It is designed to, where a couple of commissioners can't get together and say, well, are you gonna vote? Well, I'm gonna vote this way. Why are you gonna vote this way, because? You just, if your commissioners just wanna go, I'm just, I'm just here, then they can do that. And if commissioners are shooting an email, or just saying, I have dinner, you go, man, you know, what do you think about that bill we're voting on? I guess that's gonna be tough, that's all you're saying, no problem. If you get into, well, this is why I'm gonna vote for it, and why aren't you gonna vote for it? Then you have to, have to be, it has to be announced.
Well, a little nasty ground that I got when I was on the school board from the ethics committee, there was three of us, three of, on the school board. And the thing we did, walk into a room, look at a computer, and turn around, walk out. Not a thing was discussed, nothing. And I got a pretty strong letter from ethics committee. My understanding is anytime you get more than one, any one, one of us could go with Brent. This is my understanding, anywhere. If you put two of us with Brent, or two of us together, or more, I like, you're, you're in violation of sunshine law, because transparency of the is, of, Mr. Hurdis could say, well, we were talking, discussing something, and I said a word.
No, that's not correct.
That's the way that the letter read, that I got through the ethics committee.
I understand, but that's not correct.
Same thing.
I didn't really bring up the ethics.
Same back, so you're alone.
I'm throwing up the idea of being a person, yes.
Please, please.
Okay, and, and I'll speak to the elephant in the room, but this is my interpretation of what's been said, or what's been implied.
All right, I need you to pick up, because I've got some stuff in my ears.
Sure.
So, for next week, I'm not gonna be able to hear it coming.
That's okay, if I get too loud, I'll propose. To me, the elephant in the room of either what's been said, or what's been implied, is we don't trust each other. Now, now, having said that, to me, I'm appreciative of every one of you, of doing whatever you feel like you're capable of doing, within the law, they're not asking nobody to break the laws, within the laws, because there's no way Brent Bush, with all the issues that's on the table, can give justice to the attention that's being required of the financial status of this county right now. He needs all the help he can get. Some of us have more time than others, and I understand that. He needs all the help he can get. Some of us have more time than others, and I understand that. That's why I don't want things that anybody say, why aren't you doing that? I do it, why don't you do it? I keep my mouth shut, and I go about trying to do the best I can with the time I have. And based on my understanding, and it came directly from the folks that should know, anytime you have an informational of shared information, you can have this whole room, all the officials and everybody there, without quote unquote, public knowing about it, because it's just informational. There's nothing to share, there's no announcement to be made, there's no decisions being made, it's just informational. Trying to give help to the citizens of this county. And that's all I, Ron Manhathie will ever be part of. I'll look everyone of you in the eye, and you can take it to the bank. Ron Manhathie's not doing nothing behind closed doors. That's not right. I'm not part of that. I will never be part of. If I see something going on, I'm not, I'll be able to walk out, because I wouldn't have been there if I'd known something was going on, because the folks we got, we trust each other, we know each other, we know each other, and share information when it's appropriate to share. And when nothing ever materializes, not waste your time to tell you something that on your radar screen, that you never, nothing came up type deal. Only bidding type deal. And it got my attention because we have a particular case with summers of thousands of dollars is on this carry. And yet, there's been no legal action, no first step, zero, nothing. And the best information I can determine from the quote unquote bad debt collection indicate we have is credit service bureau. I don't even think they got any procedures to have us other than to send it to debt. Say, what are you gonna do about it? To my knowledge, there's not been a single legal action in this county. I mean, it's been forever, but sure, that's wrong. But but for years, you, no one knows about it if it's occurred. And yet, there's a real good possibility, there's a bill to pay. And we're not doing nothing. At least I know we're still in a window to be able to legally do something, if that's the direction whoever, Brent, whoever makes that decision. I don't know who makes that decision.
So there's never been a judgment?
I've got, right, I've got, he has, we have, because it has to do with privacy and individuals. So I take that information as into main now, now.
Before, I don't know if he's ready.
Right, I don't know anytime, and so I've.
But again, I don't know.
I've asked them, should we do, are we eating this house? You know, what are you doing? Well, it don't matter what it's about.
We haven't got a judge against somebody. To my knowledge, we never even started the process to judge. There's never been no legal action to collect the scent or a hundred thousand dollars. But anyway, all it means is that that does, but fuck, I don't get on social media, and that's Ron Manhathie's calling to make. I do not use a means of my communicating, and that's my decision I've made. If you don't have my phone number, I'd gladly give it to you. My house number is in the book, and I'll give you my cell number. Anytime you got a question, anytime you got a question, don't ask me on social media, I I will respond to you. But you call me up, and I'll meet you, I'll talk face to face. I'll, I'll, anytime at all, I'll share with you Ron Manhathie's knowledge of what information you're seeking, if I can, and I'll answer it, this, I'm an open book, in the store.
Listen, I agree with what you just said, because, and I'll give you an example, you and I did that when we went to the roof, and that was two commissioners on a gathering of information. And 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 I get, and I didn't bring this up because of of sunshine law, because that wasn't my point.
But it's still a good topic to be discussed now, absolutely. It's a good topic to be discussed.
There there is a mistrust, there is a feeling that, you know, two of you are doing more, and we're not included, or part of us are not included. What I'm saying is, I'd like for us to work on that, so that we don't, we can alleviate that and get that out of the way, and start learning how to do this. Because first year, y'all know, there are six of us there bringing, and, you know, and it's just a learning process. I would really suggest that if we're gonna have any kind of meetings, that we should really always strive to have at least one representative at least in here, if if that's possible.
Not possible.
I know it's not possible all the time, but it it can be some of the time.
Well, it can, and 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 I'll do better from my Ron Manhathie's perspective, of trying my best to quote unquote, whoever wants to be whatever.
Yeah, because, you know, I was actually off that day.
Well, but but the thing of it, folks, is this, I come from the business world, okay? You got to run, you got to do, you got to take the lead, and you can't wait for other people to push or or do whatever in the sense of trying to help. And that's all we all should be trying to do, is work. I don't care, guys, don't tell me where you're going to do whatever, whatever. If something's on your radar screen to do it, don't stop what you're doing to check the Ron Manhathie. You just keep plowing. Now, you come back and bring me the loop, if anything ever materializes where it makes sense to share or do whatever. But if it's just something, you you chase the rabbit, or you're trying to get more information, or you're trying to, you know, whatever this deal is, don't wait for Ron Manhathie's approval to do that. Run on your own, knock the wall down, run through it.
I don't really want you to purple, but I do want to let you, hey, I may be doing this, so you, you know, if you are, you might want to.
I apologize, guys. I'm not gonna call, I'm gonna be taking, and I don't use social media, so I'm in red field. So I'm gonna apologize to you, I'm gonna apologize to you, apologize to you now for things that you even less trust Ron Manhathie, or you wish you'd do it for Ron Manhathie. I just don't know, I'll tell you.
When we, Brent's got all her texts, I mean, he's our boss, so I mean.
Yeah, but you know how hard it is sometimes running rascals.
I know, I'm just, I'm just saying. Yeah, I had, I had a, I had a question today come to me, wanted me to do the meeting on the day. I already got two. So, I mean, I'm, at the same time, so it's like, you know, you you want me to clone myself, I mean, cloning is not there yet. But that's my, I don't mind, I don't, I'll go to any organization, ask me to come, if I can possibly do it. And I, and I, and so, you know, again, that's that's the frustration I have, just seems to me like that, uh, we definitely, I I like what Ronnie said. We kind of gotta work together, and, uh, I, again, I come out with a background that, you know, that you need to really, and if, again, if you don't believe we're in serious financial trouble, then, you know, I'm wasting my time, but I do believe, I believe we're, I believe we've been in serious financial trouble for about five years. And I think we've ignored it, and and that's all I'm trying to, I've put, I've committed to try to get us in a better financial posture, at least along the time setting, uh, in this position, whatever it's, but I definitely, any others discussion, any other issues?
I appreciate all of this, thank you, to you. And you also, so I apologize for that as well. I ju, I I just know that we we we're making, we're risking stuff. And I just know what we say, we should measure and careful and manually decide how we do it, because the last thing we want to do is call you a problem. That's the last thing I have to say.
Well, I mean, you know, and then just give you, for instance, I mean, you know, when we, when we stepped in and saw the place in the first of September, we didn't have nothing that worked. Ronnie Manhathie and I, we jumped in my truck, we started driving after work, a little bit of penalty, trying to find stuff that we could work with. I mean, you know, we knew it had to be done. No, we didn't talk to nobody else. Now, when we found something, we called Brent, you know, said, this is what we found. And, you know, and we just, we continued, just keep working and working till we got it, before we're all at night. So, I mean, you know, everybody knows what the problem is that we have as far as the government and financial stuff is concerned. If anybody else has got an avenue they can run with, run with, bring it back to us, I ain't got no problem. But, you know, but when somebody, you know, sitting at home trying to, uh, judge or make a comment on something, and them not even be on the ground to see what's going on, that's what I have to worry about.
I can't, I work.
I'm staying.
I work, yeah, and that's what I'm saying, and I I am so grateful for people that are able to do more and good for the county, because this is what the county needs, and the county's been needing somebody to sort up to the front and do that.
Yeah, I I ain't got a problem with that.
And I can't do it.
So I'm worried that work's good before I'm, no one, kid in the gym, and I heard a lean, sunshine.
I need to, Jim, Jim?
Yes.
Oh, she's good, Jim?